...a quorum has been declared.
Okay, the next item, we have the agenda approval.
Mayor, if there's no additions to the agenda, I'll make a motion to approve it as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Start voting, please. Ms. Holly? We, is it showing up?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda, we have a citizens' comment. And we ask for the citizens, when you come up to the podium, feel free to say what's on your mind. Well, we ask that you limit your time to three minutes. At three minutes, when the clock hits three minutes there, I will politely ask you to sit down and end your comments, okay? The first person we have is Senator Larry Crowler. Would you like to come up, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here on two reasons.
Okay.
The first one, I'm here to openly congratulate Councilman Grego. The Veterans Day Parade last year, he brought an issue to me that DMV was, if an employee at DMV spoke Spanish at that office, their job was in jeopardy. And due to Councilman Grego's telling me about this, I did work with DMV and that issue has been resolved. And now Spanish can be spoken in a DMV office. We're talking about a place in San Luis Valley where it's openly spoke. So Congressman Grego, I want to thank you for bringing that to my attention and that issue has been resolved. The second issue I have, Mr. Mayor, I was out in Groton, Connecticut, March 17th, for the USS Colorado submarine, nuclear attack. Probably the most sophisticated attacks of in the world. And what I got is a small token that I brought back, even though we are one of the most landlocked areas of the country, we are still part of Colorado. And I thought I would bring and actually dedicate what I have brought to you, not only to the city of Alamosa, but to the county of Alamosa, as well as the people of the San Luis Valley. So I would like to present a small token of what happened. What it is, is a, it is a book of the USS Colorado. I was out there for the christening a year before this, and it's quite an exciting event. And the people of the state of Colorado should be very proud that this submarine was named after them. So if I could, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to present this and this medallion to the city for your safekeeping, as well as sharing with this, sharing these with the people of the San Luis Valley.
Thank you, Senator Crowler. Thank you so much for your service to our state, as well as the citizens here in the valley. And we're going to go down and take a picture with them, okay, everyone?
Well, we've only got 59 seconds, so you need to hurry.
No, that's for the, for the people speaking. We get a little bit more time. Senator Crowler, I just want to thank you for what you've done. This good friend of mine, James Gaeagels, he moved from Denver to be close to his parents who live in Mona Vista. And he moved to the DMV here.
I see.
And when he come up and talked to me, he says, I moved back, and I says, well, I start talk to him in Spanish. ¿Cuál es más que estás listo para hablar con la gente en español? And he says, I can't. I said, well, what do you mean? Thought he was joking with me. He says, if we speak Spanish in the DMV, we will lose our job. I said, that's not right. So I called, I says, well, let me make some calls in. So when I spoke to Senator Crowler, he couldn't believe it either. But they, I guess they had a policy that they weren't enforcing, but it's something like that. But thanks to you, and right now, there's, in the whole San Luis Valley, I want to say there's over 50% Hispanics. And then even the state of Colorado right now is issuing license to people, undocumented people. So how do you do that if you can't speak Spanish?
Sí, yo hablo español un poquito. El hombre es para el...
Well, you know, it is an issue, and it's one that needed to be straightened out. But you're correct, we are issuing licenses to undocumented, and they have to speak Spanish at those places. So it was, it was a, I do believe it was an oversight at this point in time. No one has ever lost their job because they spoke Spanish. But the reality is the San Luis Valley where so many people speak Spanish.
Right.
And there's some of us that try to speak Spanish. So, you know, it's something that, it's a right and just deal. But had you not spoken to me that day, I would not have known it. Because there's so many times we can get things done behind the scenes.
Correct. Well, we thank you so very much for...
Yeah, well, I just, you know, I thought I would share that as well as the submarine. But it was an exciting event, and all of, the entire state should be very proud of this nuclear sub. It is the most advanced nuclear attack sub in the world, so.
Well, we all read the book and...
Okay.
Thank you for sharing this with us, and we greatly appreciate you.
All right, well, I thank you very much for your time. Good night.
You're welcome. Thank you. Up next, we have Ms. Ruthie Brown.
Hi, I'm Ruthie Brown, you all know that. It's really nice to see this motion to reclassify the part-time maintenance worker, one position at the Ricky Recycling Center to full-time. I'm thankful, but I don't know why it had to be such a battle. And I don't know if a motion means it's a done deal or not. But I went out to recycling on Sunday at noon, so I had to drive around all night Saturday and all Sunday morning with my truck full of junk, like it is right now. But when the young man opened up the recycling center at noon, people were lined up, they wanted to go, it was windy. And the stuff they do down there is huge. They're, they'll never get caught up unless they get that 10 extra hours, you know? And even then, it's probably a drop in the bucket, but... And that young man was more than willing to work Sundays. He would love to have a full-time job, and he would love to have benefits, and he would love to be able to support his family. And he would love to work more for the city of Alamosa. So that being said, I showed you some of the names that people were signing at the store. I'd love to get that off my front counter. What people really wanted was the recycling center to open at eight on Sunday morning. So if their truck was full, they could go early and unload it, and then go to the sand dunes, or out to, or to the mountains, or wherever. Or, and/or later on Saturday afternoons. You know, I'm older, I don't like to work when it's hot. So early mornings is my time of choice. I'd like those thoughts to be taken into consideration. And I guess it would be interesting to know, and maybe we'll find out tonight, how much extra that is truly and actually going to cost the city of Alamosa and the citizens, if it's going to be passed on to the citizens. I sleep in the county, but I think I live in the city of Alamosa, but I'm willing to pay my dollar or two if that's what it takes. But I'd like to know those figures, if you could share that with the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Up next, we have State Representative Donald Valdez.
Buenas noches, ¿cómo están? Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight, I bring to you a tribute for the first responders of Alamosa. And with that, I read, first responders of Alamosa responded swiftly and with exceptional skill in response to multiple fires that struck the community of Alamosa on April 17th, 2018. Including a brush fire of nearly 300 acres, multiple unrelated structure fires, and sparking power lines, all combined with severely high winds and evacuation procedures. There were no injuries reported or livestock reported lost. This effort was led by the Alamosa Fire Department with assistance of the fire departments from Manassas, Romeo, Lahara, Capoline, Carmel, Montevista, Creed, Costilla County, and Mosca Hooper, as well as asphalt construction, coolie excavation, city of Alamosa, Alamosa County Road and Bridge, Alcon Construction, among others. The members of the Colorado House of Representatives are proud to recognize the first responders of Alamosa for their service to the community and the state of Colorado, which was and continues to be truly admirable and greatly appreciated. On request of myself and the House, I present to you Alamosa this tribute.
Thank you so much, State Representative Donald Valdez. And what we'll do is we'll have our first responder chiefs back there come up front, and Council will go down and take a picture with you, and we thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Mark, if you want to come as well from a Public Works perspective?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, State Representative Valdez, and we thank you for everything that you do for the state and for our community as well. We really appreciate your efforts.
Absolutely.
All right, have safe travels. Okay, we have time for a brief follow-up from Eric or either Heather in regards to any comments that were made tonight.
No follow-up. Obviously, we'll have on the agenda the discussion related to the recycling center later in the meeting.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is ceremonial items. Proclamation recognizing the Boys and Girls Club of the San Luis Valley Campus Smoking Tobacco-Free Policy. To help me out with that tonight, I have Counselor Griegego, who's going to read that proclamation.
Mayor, thank you very much. Boys and Girls Club are near and dear to my heart, so I appreciate you allowing me to do this. Recognizing the Boys and Girls Club of the San Luis Valley Campus Smoke and Tobacco-Free Policy. Whereas the San Luis Valley Boys and Girls Club is committed to provide a healthy, safe, and clean environment for students, staff, faculty, and visitors. And whereas young children roam and play on the campus, and campus cleanup becomes hazardous. Whereas research continues to show that the use of cigarettes, cigars, pipe, smokeless tobacco, and other tobacco products, as well as exposed to secondhand smoke, leads to disease and premature death for smokers and non-smokers alike. And whereas Boys and Girls Clubs across America are helping to raise awareness of secondhand smoke danger and eliminate exposure. And now therefore, the city of Alamosa celebrates with the youth of the Boys and Girls Clubs of the San Luis Valley Campus and designate as a tobacco and drug-free environment. On behalf of the city of Alamosa, the citizens, the citizens honor the Boys and Girls Club of the San Luis Valley for their smoke and tobacco-free policy, and their commitment to the health and well-being of students, faculty, and visitors of the campus. And the mayor will sign this.
Okay, and we have the Executive Director for the Boys and Girls Club, Aaron, if you want to say a few things or make a comment while we get ready to go down there and take a picture with you and your group. Looks like you brought a busload in. It's good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my name is Aaron Moeburger. I am the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Clubs of the San Luis Valley.
Hi, I'm Adrian Riya. I'm the Youth of the Year for the Boys and Girls Club of the San Luis Valley.
And this project is the outcome of a social action project that our young people have been involved in for the last year. They saw that their campus was not as safe as a place as they wanted it to be, and so they were continually going around and picking up, on a weekly basis, trash cans full of trash, and a lot of that included tobacco products, which of course then lead to more danger of young people being exposed to have the opportunity to use tobacco products. So they worked really hard to identify a social action, to do cleanup on campus, and then really to see this through, I think, says a lot to the city for being able to allow this proclamation, and to these young people for being able to take some action that improves their community.
Thank you so very much, and thank you to all the Boys and Girls members who really helped make this possible. We have a couple of comments, one from Counselor Hensley.
I just want to thank you very much for doing this. This is such a great example for all the kids, young and older. And, you know, this is a place that you guys hang out for quite some time each day. And so I think it installs that sort of philosophy, and hopefully then continues with the rest of your day. So thank you very much for doing that. It's starting a good precedent going forward.
Counselor Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Kudos to you, young man, and all your friends, and I'm sure there's others at the club, for getting this going. I'm glad this is a student-initiated project, and keep it up.
Thank you.
Okay, and if you can get your team to come down here, I'll have Council go down and take a picture. Okay, up next, under ceremonial items, we have a proclamation recognizing and commending all community firefighters, first responders, law enforcement agencies, and other partner agencies. Proclamation, a proclamation recognizing and commending all community firefighters, first responders, law enforcement agencies, and other partner agencies. Whereas, a fire started at noon on April 16th, 2018, at 12th, at the 12th South in Alamosa County, and burned approximately 60 acres. Firefighters began working hotspots at 7:00 a.m. on April 17th, where the fire was burning underground and in manure. When the extreme winds began, the flames ignited from the hotspots and spread to nearby pasture and sagebrush, burning approximately 150 acres in only 30 minutes. And whereas, firefighters fought the fire in extreme wind conditions, while also being called to three structure fires and one downed power line. Firefighters spent 14 hours fighting the fires on the 17th. And whereas firefighters continued to work the fire for two days following the wind-driven event on the 17th, finally closing out the response on the 19th. And whereas, 72 firefighters from the following agencies responded, Alamosa, Mona Vista, Del Norte, Mineral County, Lahara, Capoline, Carmel, Romeo, Manassas, Center, Castillo County, Colorado Division of Fire Prevention and Control, and the U.S. Forest Service. And whereas, in addition, the following private and government resources were used. Alamosa County Road and Bridge, four road graders, three water tanker trucks, eight personnel. The city of Alamosa, one road grader, evacuation facilities, Alcon Construction, two water tanker trucks, two personnel. A.C.I. Construction, one grader, two water tanker trucks, four personnel. Alter Fuels, one fuel tanker truck, one personnel. And whereas, the following law enforcement agencies responded, Alamosa Police Department, Alamosa County Sheriff's Office, Adams State University Police, Colorado State Patrol, Alamosa Ambulance Service, and whereas, Public Works crews responded to approximately 70 calls for service with downed trees and other wind damage. And whereas, Park and Recreation Staff, Administrative Staff, and Red Cross prepared for evacuaries at the Family Recreation Center. And whereas, several individuals and local businesses donated food and beverages. Now, therefore, on this 16th day of May 2018, I, Tai Coleman, Mayor of the city of Alamosa, hereby recognize all of the community firefighters, law enforcement agencies, private and governmental resources, and wish to express my sincere gratitude and appreciation for their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. If I could have Chief, both Chiefs come up, and then Mark, if you can come up as well. And we're going to present this proclamation to you all, because without your hard work and dedication, and your staff members in the team, and everyone in the city, that fire could have been a lot worse on our community.
Mayor, could we ask Heather to come up too?
Yes, please, Heather. Yes, thank you, thank you, Counselor Vehill. Any Councilors want to respond to that? Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't really know how bad it was that day, because I was up in center, obviously. And so getting all those emails every 10 minutes, starting from noon to seven, eight o'clock at night. Just wanted to thank staff for doing that and keeping me abreast of what was going on. And then I didn't, I also didn't know all who exactly helped our fire department put out this fire. So it's really awesome to see all the different communities in the valley come together and help. So just a shout-out to all those, all those different partners throughout the valley who came down and helped us.
Thank you, Counselor Vehill. Counselor Carson?
I'd like to say thank you to you guys as well. You guys do a great job, as I've said before. We're blessed to have such a good city staff, and that fire could have been a lot worse had you guys not responded so quickly. So thank you, guys.
Okay, Counselor Brawls?
I'd like to say, great work, because a fire like that could cause a lot of damage. And I've been involved throughout the years on several forest fires and so forth, so, I mean, the wind could take it a long way, so. Excellent job that she's been able to minimize it like that, so congratulations and thank you.
Okay, Counselor Daniels, did you want to say anything?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. I'm not sure I can, you know, wave or clear my throat to try to get attention if you would like. But I just wanted to say, I really appreciate how quickly everyone came together to take care of this. And also the positive attitude the entire staff had throughout the whole event. I know it was really hard work, people had hard, hard days and hard nights. And everyone that I spoke to on the team was very willing, able, and came at it with a really positive attitude. So thank you for all of the work you put in to keep our community safe.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. And I too would like to thank you all for the hard work. I was actually having my weekly meetings with Heather and Holly when everything was going on, so I got a chance to see and hear some of the things as you all were in action. And what I liked about it was is you all were so cool and calm throughout this whole ordeal. And you did such a wonderful job throughout all of this. And one moment Heather was, she would talk with me, and then next minute she'd say, hold on, this is the chief, I got to talk to him. And then she'll say something to him, and then she'll hang up and the other chief will call, and, but they did a great job. So just want to let you know that we appreciate everything that you do. Okay, all right, thank you. Up next, we have a presentation from an outside agency.
Consent calendar.
Consent calendar first, I believe, Mayor.
See, I'm speeding along here, all right. Next, thank you, thank you, Counselor Vehill, too. The Consent Calendar A.
I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, start voting. We're missing one. All right. Let's start this, let's start this over one more time, okay? All right, let's do it now. Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, up next, we have, under Regular Business, presentation from an outside agency, Sangre de Cristal National Heritage Area Cinco de Mayo Block Party. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. They requested to come after the event to provide some information, and they have a slideshow, and I think to kind of just say thank you. If you want to just approach and go ahead, and tell me when I should hit play.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, thank you for spending some time with us and letting us kind of do a follow-up on the event. We just wanted to thank you for your support for our Cinco de Mayo event. We weren't sure how the community was going to respond, or what kind of attendance we were going to have, and it turned out to be an amazing event. We estimate we had about a thousand people there, so we had some really great support from community members, so on behalf of my organization, my thirteen-member Board of Directors, my staff, and our major partner in this event, the S.L.V. Brewery, we just wanted to say thank you for helping to support this event. We had a total of six sponsors for this event from the local Alamosa community, including the town of Alamosa. We had, in addition to that, twenty-five other individuals or organizations who gave in-kind donations to help make this event a success, so there was a lot of support for this type of event, to pull the community together, and to provide an opportunity for just some recreation and having fun, learning about the culture. So we had three performers who performed, Samias de la Tierra came out, and they did some flotirico dancing. We had Los Bailadores who came out, and they did some Spanish colonial dances, and then we ended the evening with a Hispano rock band, and so Indian Nickel performed for the dance throughout the night, and so that, that was a huge success. It was a really family-friendly event, so we're really happy that it went over really well. Our Board is in really support of trying to do this as an annual event. So with that being said, we also wanted to show some photos from the night, and so if you can start the slideshow, and then my staff is just going to come up and present you guys with some tokens of appreciation that we have for you. Thank you. So the event started at 5:00 p.m., and as you can see through the pictures, as it progressed through the night, more and more people kind of came into the street and, and just started enjoying it. The giveaways, so the t-shirts, the churro cupcakes, and the bizcochitos were a huge hit, and people really loved those, so we appreciate the organizations who, who donated those for the event.
Well, thank you so much, and I'll let Counselor make some comment, but Scott, do you mind coming up here also, because I want you to tell a little bit about the economic impact of that event, if you don't mind sharing with us, I heard a lot of good stories about it. There you go.
Can do the microphone. I guess before economic impact, I want you guys as a council to know that, I'm not sure what department at the city I didn't work with to pull this off, and as is echoed with the first responders, you guys have a great staff. From getting it started with Holly for permitting, to Heather digging deep to find some funding, even though there wasn't any left in the events fund, and then Public Works and the Parks and Rec folks getting out there, getting the stage up, making sure the safe streets are, are set, and then finally, Dwayne and his crew coming out and making sure we do it legit and keep everybody safe, you got a great staff, so thank you. And economically, I can tell you, I went to City Market four times that night, and to get a little more tequila twice. We had a wonderful turnout, and it was because the partnership that you guys showed to make it happen, and the heritage area carried through to the community. It was truly multicultural, multi-generational, folks from different economic backgrounds, and women, children, men, women, everybody showed up, and it was awesome, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to your staff too, and your employees as well. And thank you for the presentation, I think a few councilors have a few comments they would like to make, starting off with Counselor Grealio.
I just want to thank you for all the hard work that you put into this, and I was out there on the sidelines, there was a lot, a lot of people. And when you get a, a group of, a community come together to share a different culture and enjoy the music, the dancing, and all that, that is great, you know, and I hope that this can happen annually, and not only with Cinco de Mayo, but other groups, to share the different cultures in this, in this diverse community and valley that we live in, so thank you very much.
And Counselor Hensley, and then Counselor Carson.
So I was out of town that evening, and obviously I made a big mistake by not being in town that evening, so I'm looking forward to the second annual Cinco de Mayo event, so I can make sure I'm there. So I think it's something that's fantastic, and I'm looking forward to you continuing this on.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you guys for doing that. The people that went really enjoyed it, it was a good family fun event, and I heard wonderful things about it. I am also sorry I could not make it. Thank you guys, and I would love to see it yearly.
I too would like to thank you, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to participate in the first annual Cinco de Mayo celebration that promoted, promoted diversity and culture. And I tell you, we, we do a lot here in the city trying to help out different groups and organizations when they're trying to put on events for a first time, but this first time was an impressive first time. I've never seen a first-time event become this successful so quickly. Great work for all of you who participated and worked together as a team to make it happen, and I can assure you, next year on Cinco de Mayo celebration, I will wear my glasses, because I know it'll be hot outside, but thank you for the gifts as well, appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate all that you do, and we're happy that you're part of our, our National Heritage Area, and we couldn't have done it without our volunteers, without our staff, everybody works so hard because they're so passionate about the history and the culture here, and so that's what makes it so great. Thank you again.
You're welcome, thanks for the gifts too, appreciate it. Alrighty. Up next on the agenda, we have a Public Works Department.
Thank you, Mayor, Dan's making his way up to handle this item right now.
Okay, thank you so much, thank you, Dan.
Public Works Department normally handles the processing of annexation requests through the city, but because of the complexity of this one involving the city and the county, Eric did the bulk, the bulk of the work on this one, I'd like to actually turn it over to Eric for discussion.
Too many things in front of my speaker button. So there are a couple things going on with this annexation. The first, as you know, is that the city and the county jointly own the airport property, and the county has filed a petition for annexation. In order to comply with the requirements of the statute, the city as half-owner will need to join in that petition, so the first order of business with respect to this annexation would be a motion to join in the county's petition for annexation, so that there is more than fifty percent of the owners of the property petitioning for annexation. And then, secondly, this is a resolution for finding of substantial compliance of the annexation application, and in order to find substantial compliance, you will have to have done the, the motion to join in with it first, because only when more than fifty percent have complied is there substantial compliance. Staff's review, Dan's review, is that once that happens, then this petition is substantially compliant, and it can move then forward. The next steps in the annexation process would be setting a hearing on eligibility, and the resolution finding substantial compliance does set that hearing, and that would occur, I think it's in June, is it the June 27 meeting, Dan?
June 27 meeting, yes.
June 27 meeting. After, if there is a finding of eligibility, which I assume there would be, then you actually move on to consideration of the annexation itself, and any requirements that should go into the annexation agreement. So this is a, really it's a multi-step process, this, this step is really just a housekeeping step, is the petition sufficient.
Thank you, Eric. Counselor, do you have any questions or comments?
This is what we talked about in the work session?
No. We have had discussions in regards to untangling some of the property, and that, that's a, that's a separate issue, and those discussions are ongoing. This actually doesn't impact that at all, and so staff's recommendation is that for orderly development of the airport property, so if they want to put more hangers out there or something like that, that this annexation would make sense for that, and it does not impact some of those other discussions that we are having with them.
Counselor Grealio?
So let me get this clear, so we would motion to, to join and the resolution at the same time, Counselor, or separate? Because you said there's a multiple, no, multiple steps.
Yes, I would recommend that you do the motion to join in first, and just have a vote on that, and then you have someone introduce the resolution and have a vote on that.
Okay, with that, then I'll make the motion to join in the airport annexation petition filed by the Alamosa County.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, if not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much, Ms. Holly. Okay, so that's going to bring us to the resolution.
So staff would recommend that someone make a motion to approve the resolution finding substantial compliance.
That would be Resolution Number 11-2018.
I move that we pass Resolution Number 11-2018.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? If not, please start voting. We're missing one. We're missing one. Okay, we're going to do it again. Let's try it again. Start voting again. All right, there we go. Okay.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. All right, Item B. Alamosa County requests to waive the airport annexation fees.
The Public Works Department typically charges a $500 base fee plus $25 an acre for annexations, in this case at 59.97 acres, that would result in a, a fee of nineteen-hundred, nineteen-hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-five cents of fees, and the county has requested waiver of this fee, and since the city is also a party to this, staff was recommending that the council go ahead and consider waiver of the fee.
Okay, counsel? Counselor Grealio?
If there's no further questions, I'll make the motion that we, that we waive the airport annexation fees, for Alamosa County and city, or just Alamosa County, Counselor?
Both.
It would be all fees, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Okay. Thank you, Dan. Next, we have Finance, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 14-2018, and ordinance amending Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa to adopt Colorado Municipal League standardized sales tax definition, and incorporate changed definitions into Alamosa's Code of Ordinances where appropriate. Finance.
Thank you, Mayor, I've been deputized.
Okay.
This, as we discussed when this came up for first reading, this is a, an effort, statewide effort spearheaded by the Colorado Municipal League to standardize sales tax definitions in the municipalities that collect their own sales taxes throughout the state, primarily so that entities that have more than one location in which they are present can have consistent sales tax implications of, of what their activities are. The council had adopted a similar model standardized sales tax proposal back in the late 1990s, and this is a, nineteen ninety-one, I'm sorry. And this is a 1991, I'm sorry, it's even longer than that. So this is a sort of a reprise of that project. I have called through our sales tax ordinance to take only those standardized sales tax definitions that we actually use and incorporate them into our ordinance. We have a few other very quirky little definitions of our own, such as tax for lodging that wasn't in the standardized. So it is adapted to our code and to our particular sales tax ordinance.
Okay? Thank you, Eric. So at this time, do I open it up for a public hearing? Okay? At this time, I would like to open it up for a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to voice their concerns, please come up to the podium and do so. Okay? Doesn't look like we have anyone, so I will now close the public hearing. Open up to counsel. Okay, Counselor Carson.
I make a motion that we apply, that we adopt the ordinance Number 14-2018, amending Chapter 18 of the Court of Ordinances.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay? Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay? All right. So, up next, we have City Clerk and Municipal Court. Public hearing and second reading of Ordinance Number 13-2018.
Okay, counsel, this is amending Sections 10-32 and 11-52 of the Code of Ordinances to increase the guideline look-back period for the third offense for selling alcohol to a minor and to decrease the minimum penalty for sale to a minor to $500. On April 18th, council had the work session to discuss and review the components regarding those penalties for liquor license holders related to violations of their liquor license. At the work session, it was discovered that the look-back term for third offenses for sale to a minor provides for one year, whereas the intention was to mirror the guidelines in CCR 203-2, Regulation 47-604, which provides a look-back term of two years. So council agreed that we needed to reflect that directly, that ordinance does this. At that same work session, we discussed the minimum penalty for violation of sale of alcohol to a minor, which is the server who is doing that, which is codified at Section 11-52 of the Code of Ordinances, to read the minimum penalty for violation of Section 11-51, sale of alcohol to a minor, and set the penalty for half the maximum penalty under the jurisdiction of the Alamosa Municipal Court, which is currently 1,325. You guys agreed that you desired to keep a minimum penalty in place to make it a more appropriate fine of $500 rather than that 1,325. So this ordinance makes both of those changes.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Okay, we'll open it up for a public hearing for Ordinance Number 13-2018. If anyone has any comments or concerns, please come up to the podium and express yourself. If not, I close the public hearing and I bring it back to counsel. Counsel Veale.
Mayor, I move that we approve Ordinance Number 13-2018.
I second that, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, start voting, please. Okay, Ms. Holly.
The motion carried unanimously.
Christina wanted to say something.
Oh, Counselor Daniel, I apologize. I don't see you.
That's okay. This is difficult, Mayor, and I apologize for that. I was just going to say how much I appreciated the work session on this and that our discussion in that we're taking underage serving and serving alcohol in general very seriously as a city. I feel like we've always done that, but I feel like we're taking a closer look at our ordinances and I appreciate Holly making sure that we are on track to do the right thing. And I just really wanted to say I appreciate the way council is looking at these offenses. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. I apologize for not including you on earlier opportunities for comments as well because I believe you were at the Cinco de Mayo event, too, right?
I actually was not.
You was not?
And I would just have echoed everything everyone else said, but thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Counselor Daniel is now texting me if she wants to say something, so I should be able to catch it.
Okay, you get it? All right. The way of the future, everybody. Okay. Up next, diversion program funding. Is that going to be?
That'll be me.
Okay.
So this is diversion program funding request so we can continue our Center for Restorative Programs diversion program until our JAG funds are received. In 2016, the City of Alamosa and Center for Restorative Programs, CRP, partnered to apply for the JAG funds, which is the Juvenile Assistant Grant, to continue the juvenile diversion program in municipal court and expand the diversion program to the adult population. In 2016, the city was awarded grant funding in the amount of $68,010. In 2017, we applied for continued funds and after appeal, we were awarded the funds in the amount of $61,209. On September 19th, we were informed that the start of the projects were delayed due to the State Division of Criminal Justice not having yet received funds from the federal government, pushing the start of our grant time to January 1st. That same week, we were offered the opportunity to receive gap funding in order to bridge the time between the funding cycles. We received an update in December that stated that their funds still had not been received from the federal government and they could only assume that it was due to them working through the federal court cases regarding sanctuary cities. As of today, we still have not received the funds for our 2017 JAG grant award and there is no indication that they won't still be sent, but there is nothing that we can do to move the process along any quicker to receive those funds. We have since also applied for the continuation funds for 2018 and have received notice that the JAG Board is recommending the funding in the amount of our request of $55,088, pending federal funding and approval by the governor. Since we have not received the JAG funding for 2017, CRP has been able to continue to accept juvenile referrals without high impact. However, they voluntarily continue to accept adult referrals as well. So this has resulted in them incurring about four months of staff costs, which is approximately $20,000, in an effort to keep programming available to ensure the significant infrastructure that was developed for adult referrals did not collapse. Unfortunately, without having JAG funds available to keep the program in place, CRP cannot continue to serve the adult population in the way it has been. And with those, I didn't put this in the communication piece, but with the adult referrals, it did take us a while and that's why we had to appeal the 2017 funds because we, in 2016, we didn't get a quick enough start on that adult referral program. So in 2017, we got that up and going, so we're trying to not let that fall. Unfortunately, without having the JAG funds available in place, CRP cannot continue to serve the adult population. And because of the success rates we have seen with these programs, it's essential that we are able to continue to have them as an option in the municipal court. After discussion with Luke Yoder, who is the Executive Director for CRP, it is being asked that we can request funds in the amount of $10,000 to cover the cost of the services that were provided in the four months that they incurred costs without payment from the JAG funds. It is also recommended that we have funds available to pay for these services offered to individuals coming through the municipal court in the gap period from now until we begin to see JAG funds come through. When checking with, to see if the city could be reimbursed for the costs if we were to pay for the services in the gap period, the Office of Adult and Juvenile Justice Assistance made us aware that reimbursement was not an option. And the funds can only be dispersed for costs incurred after they have received them and programs can officially continue or begin. So the question before you is first, if you are, if you wish to approve funding, a total amount of $40,000, $10,000 to cover that cost that CRP incurred, half of their costs that they incurred, and then $30,000 we have funding available to continue the diversion program. And we're looking, I mean, they estimated about $1,000 a month, but I wanted to give us enough in there in case it costs more.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Counselor Hensley.
Counselor Daniel would like to speak.
Okay, Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I think everyone on council and probably most of the people in the audience know how important I think diversion programs are and things like this to be able to continue in our community. Needless to say, I'm highly disappointed that the JAG funds were delayed and that we as a community tried to figure out how to continue to move forward with this program and I appreciate CRP being in support of this request, but I am concerned about how we are going to sustain the LEED program after this year and ongoing. And I think this pot of money or these kinds of funds and how we were saving money with certain programs was one of the places I thought we could look for sustainability. And so I want to make sure that the municipal court and the rest of the city staff are having the discussions about sustainability for the LEED program. In addition to these discussions for the diversion program, I think both of them are equally important and so I don't want to lose sight of that, but I am in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Veale.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a question for clarity for me. CRP has been paying the bill for over the last eight months or so?
Pass. Luke's here. He can provide a little bit of insight on that, too.
It's okay. Thank you, guys. I appreciate the opportunity to answer those questions. So there was gap funding provided from October. This is on the federal fiscal year, which is October through September is the way these grants run. And because the funding wasn't available on October 1st of 2017, the state of Colorado provided a three-month gap window to cover the first quarter of what would have been the first quarter of the fiscal year. And so they covered funding from October through December and then we've been footing the bill from January through April.
So then with that, I think it's only fair, if we're partners in this, we better approve this money to help with this program. Like Ms. Daniel said, this is very important. It helps adults. We've seen success with it. I think we should do it.
Okay. Counsel Brawls.
Wouldn't the JAG funds become available, will the city then be reimbursed?
No.
No. This, we can't be reimbursed from the JAG fund.
So, we're paying for the?
Right. We would be paying for the services in between.
And there's no estimation when the JAG funding's coming?
Not at all.
Counsel Gregel.
I guess to continue on that, what you're saying, David, Luke, these monies were held up because of somebody's budget? Are they going to cut it? Is this something, Luke, that next year, we're going to do the same thing again, that we're going to have to come up and get more, we're going to start contributing money to this program? Is that the way it looks?
The way that it looks in theory is that no, that wouldn't be the case. The city shouldn't need to begin picking this up, at least for the next two and a half years, because we have received JAG funding theoretically for this year, this full calendar year of 2018, and also have been approved, as Holly mentioned, for our next year's award already, which would be all of 2019, the calendar year of 2019. The challenge is that these monies originate at the federal level and because of some lawsuits, like Holly mentioned, right now relative to sanctuary cities and there are states suing the government and it's a big kind of legal mess, as that all unfolds, all of these funds are kind of on pause until those lawsuits are resolved. Through doing some research and in talking to the state, it appears that they're starting to progress and there's hope that there will be some resolution to those lawsuits. They're in the Court of Appeals, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So who knows how long that will take. This essentially, I believe, would be a bridge, anticipating that those funds will eventually become available as they've been promised by the federal government.
And then I think from a staff perspective, this is really seen as a gap in anticipation that that will happen. If we start to get the impression that that's not going to happen, then we very much are going to have to sit down and have a conversation because these are two programs clearly we're very supportive, especially on the youth that has been up for almost five years and has some very good data on the results that it sees. But as Counselor Daniel's pointed out, we've got LEED as well. And so we have limited resources and we're going to need to be able to figure out and council's going to have to have that discussion of what resources go towards what. And so the intent of the request tonight really is just this short-term gap until our hope is that the federal, and if that happens to change, there would be another discussion. Is that correct, Holly?
Yeah, that's correct.
And I agree with the program. They're good programs and I appreciate the explanation you gave me on this. And like I said, with Counsel Daniels and Counsel Veale, the comments they've made, I agree with them that we need to maybe keep this going until we can find some other method of keeping these good programs going. So, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, sir. Counsel Brawls and then Counsel Carson.
What is the cost per month to the city now?
Should I answer that? I don't know who should answer that.
Well, you can answer it. I mean, you gave me an estimate, but...
Yeah. So basically, the way that we've structured this is that we have had a staff person that is fully available essentially to the city to provide these services. And at the level of referrals that we have been receiving, that makes sense. That's about the right caseload. The challenge with us right now is if we aren't able to maintain that staff position, then our capacity to handle referrals from the municipal court is going to be impacted significantly. So a full-time staff person for us is about $5,000 a month and that covers all of our operating costs in order to be able to provide the staff person that it takes to provide the services.
But for the short term, is the estimate a smaller cost of what you're going to do? Because Holly threw out a $1,000 month.
Yeah, so essentially, I think the council could make a decision about how it wants to move forward in any number of ways. One would be to say, you know, we just don't want to put money into this right now. Another would be to say we want to fund it fully at a full-time staff person. There's lots of things in between that could happen. And some of the programming that we're operating right now, I think we can make the flexibility that it would take to take on a few adult cases as well so that we don't, the way that I view this is that we've got this hose, right? And right now, if we put this kink in the hose and nothing is coming through, that hose is going to decay and we won't have it available when we need it in the future. It's going to sit out in the sun and rot. I'm bad at analogies, but eventually, we won't have that pipeline established that we need to have established to be able to have these referrals come through. And as Holly briefly mentioned, one of the real struggles that we had with the adult diversion in particular was getting that infrastructure built up to the point where we actually were receiving referrals. And so we had about a year-long period where we didn't have any adults coming through and then the state was saying, why aren't you actually serving anybody with all this money that you've put into this? And we said, we don't have a good answer for you. We had to build the infrastructure and we hadn't actually got that hose unkinked yet. And so my concern is that if we tighten things up too much, that we won't have the bandwidth to be able to take things back on when the funding does come through. So I think that's the question in my mind that we're faced with is how fully do we want that hose to be opened? Do we want it to be constricted a little bit and have, you know, $1,000 or $2,000 coming to us so that we have the capacity to take on a few cases a month? Or do we want that to be fully open so that we can take on however many referrals need to come our way based on the court's needs? So I think that's the question at hand.
And if I do the very challenging math in my head, it looks like at $30,000 for the full opening, you got about six months. Is that correct?
That is. And that takes us close to the end of this year. Theoretically, this funding was supposed to start January 1 and run through the end of the calendar year. If there's no funds available by then, then I think we need to be having that conversation that you mentioned earlier, Heather, about are we, how are we going to continue to do this and what are we going to do? And the assumption now that those funds are not going to come through in a meaningful way.
Counsel Carson.
That was what I wanted to bring up. During this six-month period, are you guys, you know, being that you've had success with the adult program, are you guys looking at other funding avenues and how close are you to that, you know? Are you going to have other sources when this six-month period is up? Because if the program is, you know, as positive as we're talking about, it's probably something that we should be looking at several other funding sources because it's out there and you're not focusing on this jagpot that's coming in because it can't go away. You know, we don't want it to go away. So we probably should be focusing on, hard focusing on some other lines of funding as well during that time.
Yeah, I think that's a point very well taken and similar to the LEED program that Christina mentioned, I think that's our job as partners with the court is to always be looking at different alternative funding sources. And Chief Oaks, for instance, Holly, Heather, myself have been having a number of conversations. That's how this JAG funding came about in the first place, was having this very type of conversation, saying how are we going to maintain and actually build upon the work that's happening now so we don't lose track of what's happening with the juveniles and so we can expand it to adults. And these kinds of conversations are exactly what leads to what you're talking about and I see that importance. And these kinds of conversations are exactly what leads to what you're talking about and I see that importance certainly.
And I think you should just take it at the point that you probably aren't gonna get the funding. You know, look at it in a negative way right away and just start looking at moving forward with some other options right away because, you know, us funding this for this six months is a good thing, but money's limited.
Absolutely. No, that makes a ton of sense.
Counselor Hensley?
So, a question I have is also with this JAG grant, is there anything at a more state level or anything that we can be doing even different municipalities and stuff to potentially put some pressure on getting this money released? I'm on CML, so I didn't know if there's something I could take back potentially to help in that. And that may not be something you can answer now, but just I thought that that could be something. And then my second question is, does this $40,000, obviously we're throwing all sorts of different numbers, so does this $40,000 though, is that a good number in the sense that will help where you're needing right now?
So I'm gonna answer the second question first and answer to that is that yes, I mean, I think that... So what I wanna, the way that we approach this in the conversations that Holly and I had is we had this $20,000 for the first four months. And I said, "Look, I think I wanna be, we need to be good partners in this." I'd like to absorb part of that and I'd like to see if the city could absorb part of that. So I think that kind of partnership makes a lot of sense to me, saying that when we can, you know, we're gonna try to help out the situation and when the city can, it will try to help out the situation. And I very much appreciate that collaborative partnership that I think has been in place for a long time. So yes, that amount of money for those next six months, I think, is sufficient and will meet the needs of the population that we're trying to serve. The first question's more complicated, obviously in lots of ways. The one thing that I am very aware of is that our district attorney's office is also being impacted by this. They have some staff position that is covered by a JAG grant as well and so I'm not exactly sure how Krista is handling that. But I know that it's not something that's limited to this context. It is something that is having significant ramifications statewide. And I don't know exactly who the right people are to talk to. You guys are the politicians. Unfortunately, I'm not as connected. But I think that CML conversation would be a great place to bring it up and say, "Are there other cities or municipalities that are being impacted by this?" Because I would highly believe that we're not the only ones that are in this position. And I certainly know that other places like district attorney's offices, law enforcement, agencies, et cetera, do receive these funds and are just kind of having to scrape by and try to figure out how to answer these difficult questions, just as we are. So I know that it's impacting a lot of people.
So what I'll do is I will reach out and see what I can do on that. And then this might be a good opportunity since I think you have an event coming up in about a week?
Two, three, three weeks, thankfully.
So just that is another that hopefully maybe we can really all help support this because more than ever, not that you didn't need it all the other years, but more than ever, so...
Yeah, absolutely. No, thank you for that, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Okay, Counselor Vehill?
If there's no further discussion, I move that we approve the funding in the amount of $40,000.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll just have a couple of comments. Luke, I would like to thank you and your CRP staff for being a great community partner throughout this whole ordeal. For me, seems like we've started to have successful momentum with the CRP programs and I personally wouldn't want to see us lose that positive momentum at this time causing us to experience a setback. So I too am in favor of us moving forward with this. Okay, Counsel? Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Thank you and thank you for everything you do, Luke. All right. Up next, we have City Manager Legal.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a first reading on Ordinance Number 15-2018, which is amending our sign code. And I'll just give you a foreshadowing. There's another sign code discussion toward the end of your agenda as well. The reason for that is that, as you know, we recently adopted the new Uniform Development Code, which contains our sign code now. And we've got an election season going on right now, which brought to mind, when you look at some of the sign placement that has traditionally taken place during election seasons, that we've got an issue with our sign code. So we tried to draft a code when the UDC was approved that accommodated what typical practice of the citizens of Alamosa was with respect to signs and we accomplished that by, or we hope we accomplished that, by allowing signs which are otherwise prohibited in the public rights of way, allowing such signs during the period of September through November, kind of the election season when people typically put those election signs up, especially in that right-of-way area between the street and the sidewalk, that grass, that grass area in residential areas. So signs like that are not allowed in commercial areas, but in residential areas, typically where people put those up, we tried to accommodate that. We realized this year, when there are primaries happening, that we did not make provision for that kind of sign placement during primary season. So Ordinance Number 15-2018 is really fairly simple. It just extends a similar period to allow such signs in residential areas from May 1 to July 5, which is a seven-week window around Colorado's newly instituted primary season. We didn't have these and this is our first year where we've had these. The season around the general election is eight weeks before and one week after the primaries. We are proposing to be seven before and one after, just because the dates kind of line up nicely.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, Counsel? Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. Makes sense, like Mr. Brawls just said. So I move that we approve Ordinance Number 15-2018 on first reading and set it for a public hearing on June 6 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Grego?
Well, I'm glad you guys think it makes sense, but I, what I don't understand is, and correct me, there's areas in town where right now these big signs are being put up. This thing right now, what we're trying to push right now, is not gonna allow that.
No, so that's the second sign discussion that's coming up tonight. So we'll have that side because there are other issues that are involved. This issue is very simple. It's we wanna open it up for primary season as well as for general season. Big signs, multiplicity of signs, we're gonna talk about that in who knows how long, but later on tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Okay, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay. Up next, we have Selection of Water Smarts Project.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
City Council held a work session on May 2 to review the recommendation from the Water Smarts Committee. We reviewed the city-owned properties, city entrances, to determine if there's changes that should be made that enhance the conservation of water and/or enhance the visual appeal of the city property. I've attached and I can open them if you guys want me to, if there's discussion on some of those specific areas. But the item before Council is if you would want in 2018 to use either, well, any amount up to $30,000 essentially. We have $15,000 in the budget this year. There is $15,000 in the 2017 budget, which we did not use. And so it would be Council's prerogative what amount you would want to dedicate towards these types of projects and to provide direction which ones you would want staff to work on.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Okay, Counsel, I'll bring that back to you. I know most of you were here when we went over this presentation. Do you have any comments? Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. Just would like to start off the conversation by saying, number one, thank you to the Water Smarts team for taking our vision and Heather and staff for taking our vision a couple of years ago and comments and concerns from community folks about how we can dress up this, different parts of town, as well as address the the water usage that we can eliminate a little bit with doing some different things. So I appreciate that. I'm gonna say, like I said a couple of weeks ago, I think it's important that we address our our entryways. I think it's important and I'm glad to hear from the group that they don't wanna do crusher finds and everything, that they wanna add color and different flowers and different shrubbery and bushes and that. So I appreciate that. And I'll just leave it at that and I guess I'll tell you what I feel after I hear what you guys have to say about what projects to do.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Vehill. Any other comments? Looks like you're gonna have to tell us what you think.
So, if you drive into town from the west, there's nothing there. So I think we should have something on, I think we should do the west gateway. I think we should do the south gateway. The west gateway is at $5,124. Okay, south gateway is estimate, just do $4,700.
And Counselor, if I could jump in just real fast?
Please.
So yes, you were looking at those numbers, but then also what we discussed during the work session is if we do do these gateways, we would do everything except for the signage. So it might be a little bit less than what those estimates are, but go ahead and still use those numbers. I just wanna make sure we all have the same understanding that we're gonna wait for the downtown design plan to kinda give us a feel from a monument sign perspective.
And also, did we, was labor included in these numbers or were they estimated in these numbers?
For these smaller ones, I think we felt that we could do it with our staff. It was some of the larger ones that we may have needed to include labor.
Okay, so right now Counselor Vehill doesn't have to really take in consideration additional costs for labor using the numbers that we have right now.
I would say if he's using these numbers, since it kind of already has some padding in there from the signage, these are probably safe numbers to be using.
Safe numbers, okay, good.
And then I think we've all talked about when folks fly into town, into the airport, they come down state. It kinda looks rough a little bit way down there. With the trees that were just planted a couple of weeks ago, last week, I think if we did some stuff around the airport, so here's a project here, the airport project, that's at $16,820. Yeah, we have $30,000. Let's spend the money. And I even think we can knock out one of those small ones, maybe that Zapata Park for $700 bucks. So, to recap, I'm saying we should do the west gateway, the south gateway, the airport and Zapata Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vehill. Thank you for being so thorough. Appreciate that.
So I did not do a very good job in the presentation and I apologize for that. Because of our wonderful volunteers who happened to also be on the Water Smarts Committee, they are already planning on donating the trees to Zapata Park. So you may wanna pick a different one because we can take that off the list.
Okay, well then if you take off Zapata Park, then I would add, yep, Hardin, Hardin Almosa, yep.
I got one comment.
Go ahead, Counsel Carson.
I agree about the signage and I agree about the gateways. And I would rather see that happen first. I had this same conversation with Heather. However, with us not doing anything as far as signage right now, that $30,000 being dumped into those gateways, we're basically just creating four piles of material till we get the sign. So until we have the design for the sign, I think we should spend some of this money on some of these parks that are lacking. Hardin Almosa's a good one, I agree. You know, there's a couple more that need attention right away. I like Olympic Park. It's really busy. And I do agree with you. I hate to, you know, make it a bigger deal than it is, but in my opinion, if we're gonna put money into those gateways right now, I think it's it's a little bit futile because we're just gonna have some piles of dirt there until we get a sign.
Counselor Vehill? Oh, I'm sorry, then you're next. I'll let Counsel Vehill respond.
Yep, thank you for your comments, Mr. Carson. I just feel like, man, one of the biggest complaints we've heard from folks in town is when you come into Alamosa from any side, any direction, you get nothing.
I agree. I disagree with that at all, but what are we getting with this?
We're getting shrubs, we're getting things cleaned up, we're getting some color, we're getting, you know, maybe some nice boulders and stuff. I don't know what that would entail completely, but...
I'd really like to see some, maybe a design of what we'd be using the money for and I'd be more on board with you on the gateways.
If you want, I can pull those up. Did you want me to pull those up?
I would like that.
Okay, so I believe west gateway was the first one. So, yep, just give me a second. So the west gateway is, there'd be, and Dan, if you wanna come up and talk as well. So there would be crusher finds, there would be some boulders, there would be some shrubs. Is that correct?
Yeah, there'd be a mixture of...
Can you come up to the microphone? Thank you.
It hasn't been completely designed yet, but what I foresee is a mixture of crusher finds, which is a small material and some one and three-quarter inch gravel material, different colors and four-inch cobble mixed with boulders and some shrubs and some native perennial wildflowers to get some color in there and eight or 10 trees.
And then on the south gateway, just give me one second. I don't know why I turned the light back on.
Dan, did you say eight to 10 trees? Yes.
Here is the south gateway. Dan, if you wanna explain what you thought would be there?
Again, the ground cover would be a mixture of fine gravel and one and three-quarter inch gravel and cobble and then the landscape materials and the boulders.
And then I will go to, is it the airport gateway that you were talking about or the airport property?
The airport at $16,000.
Okay.
Can I ask something while you're picking that one up, on that one? If I remember correctly, and I don't have my notes, were, was this not the one where we had quite a few of the trees already paid for, donated or a grant or something and so that actually was gonna cut the cost?
Actually, they were just planted last week or the week before.
Yes, so we've planted, we've either planted them or we will plant, I believe, 20 trees. Is that correct? So instead of 43, it would reduce the need down to 23.
So that would take off about $7,000.
But it doesn't include, at the very south there, where it says monument sign, it doesn't include that planter area.
Say that again?
The trees that were planted does not include that little space there at the very south at the intersection of, what is that, State Port?
I'm just looking at the numbers. So the $16,820 estimate would go down by about $7,000.
Right.
Okay, so that makes it...
We could add more.
Well, the thing is, is, you know, with the whole Water Smarts discussion, in this particular scenario, are we are we benefiting ourselves by conserving water with these particular projects? I mean, if we sink some of this crusher find and stuff into the parks that we're currently using, we get, we see an immediate benefit as far as water conservation. You know what I mean? That's one thing here. This is a rough water year. So replacing some of that grass with crusher find and cleaning up some of these parks that our citizens use on a daily basis, to me is a little more of a precedent than creating these bases for the signs. I do agree, I really want signs. I especially want one at the airport. If we could have those today, I actually talked to Heather about that. I would prefer that. But that's not gonna happen right now, so I think we should use this money in a place where our citizens would read better. Just, that's my opinion.
If I could also add, an advantage of doing the south gateway is you, as you all know, EVS took over that building and they painted it real nice. And they're also going to be doing some landscaping outside the building to make it even look better with the south gateway. So, you know, I think it'd look good, I would even say this, Mr. Carson, how about we compromise a little bit and do A, an entryway plus...
I agree. That south gateway does, it is, it needs some attention, I agree. So I would be willing to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Carson.
Any other comments? Counselor Hensley?
So, it would appear to me, and maybe I'm wrong, so the south gateway is about for, almost $5,000 and the airport would get down to about $10,000. So that's $15,000. So if we do $15,000 on entryways and then potentially look at a couple of parks to do the other.
Dan, can you can you tell us what they would do to the parks with the funding that you have set up here? What actually will take place?
Did you want me to bring up each park again?
Please, the ones that they... Please, the, the, the ones that they're talking about.
The ones that we've been talking about, okay. That's 'cause I just wanted to make sure, because that was a lot of parks. So, um, Hardin Hermosa? Oh, just one minute. There we go.
So what's happening there?
There's, uh, several trees along the north boundary there, and a new picnic shelter. And then that corner gets, uh, a gravel treatment to, um, clean up where the, the tires run over the, the corner to kill the grass in there.
And I will say, um, I believe, Dan and, and Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong, when we had our last meeting, when the group originally looked at maybe changing this, the trees were not doing very well. But this year they actually might be doing really well, and so we would assess that situation, um, to, to look at maybe keeping those trees and enhancing the area around them to ensure that they're doing well.
And I, I appreciate that, because anytime you plant a tree and you try to take it out, if it's doing well, leave it there. I would really appreciate that.
It's just the difference of, we started these discussions two years ago, and some things have changed, so, yep.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Um, I did not know of another, oh, Olympian Park, I believe, was another park that was, um, mentioned.
That'd, that'd be a good one for us to really consider, council, because people eat lunch there every single day, from eleven to two, that place is busy.
I agree with you.
I agree.
And plus, it's, it's, sorry mayor, it's also, you know, you're driving through town and make it look nicer and stuff. That'd be right there by the bowling alley, almost an entryway into Adam State and, uh, the hospital, so.
Thank you councillor Broyles.
No, those are the ones I'd vote for.
So what I have circled is the south gateway, and then, um, the Olympian Park. And, are we doing airport? Okay, so airport, south gateway, and Olympian Park.
And Hardin Hermosa.
Okay.
How, how much is that?
We're a little over.
And do the math?
'Cause if we do ten thousand for the airport, thirteen, so we're twenty-three, twenty-seven. Sorry, I lost. Oh, and then another five, so we're about thirty-two to thirty-three.
Councillor Daniel, while we're doing the math, did you have any comments?
Um, no, I, I've actually been able to keep up, looking at the pictures and things. Um, I'm agreeing with what you're saying, I like the idea of splitting between the gateways and some internal to the city parks. I think, I think that really makes sense, and so I just, you know, appreciate that conversation. Um, and I do agree about Olympian Park, I see it, people using it all the time. So yeah, that works for me, thank you mayor.
You're welcome.
If I may offer, we can also pare back the design on Olympian Park to match the funds available for the project. So, that's a rather ambitious project for Olympian Park.
What we could do is if you identify these four areas, we can know that our maximum is thirty thousand, and we'll evaluate the designs, and, you know, some of it is if we come back later with a few trees, or, you know, something like that, uh, as well. I like it.
Okay, all right, do we need to vote on any of this, or? Or just give direction?
Um, yeah, if you, maybe, I think what would be good is if you made a motion authorizing staff to move forward with those four projects as identified. You can just say that if you want. Um, and then we will also, at a later time, bring a budget amendment to you for that, to bring the fifteen thousand forward as well.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make that motion, mayor.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have any, uh, further discussion?
Yeah, well, I would, just real quick.
Okay.
Uh, I personally would like, Dan had brought up, uh, making some changes to fit the budget with Olympian Park. Well, I, maybe make another, make, maybe make budget adjustments with Hardin Hermosa, because I think Olympian Park is that important, right in the middle of town, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna knock that off a little bit.
And, and I disagree with you, because, uh, there's a lot, if you go out there to Hardin Hermosa, they use that park equally. There's a lot of families that come in there, I live right across the street, and that thing is always full. So I, I bear to, uh, disagree with you, sir.
And I did, and.
Okay.
So.
Go ahead, uh, councillor V. Hill, then councillor, um, Hensley.
So my thought is, maybe if you didn't mind, is potentially looking at sort of the balance as you're designing these, you may see some natural areas where it might be like, okay, this is, would be a good place where we could cut a little bit, and maybe let you come back to us and just say, hey, this is how it's relooking, and just sort of that idea versus us saying, let's do it here or there, 'cause you might find something that naturally makes it work that we will all be like, oh yeah, that makes sense.
That, and we also won't have the signs.
Right, so I just, I don't know, I guess, instead of us earmarking it right now, maybe let's see what they come up with to get to the thirty thousand, and we can go from there.
Okay, Dan?
That's kinda what I was thinking, is, it, like I said, it was an ambitious kinda project, and there's, there's ways to have, get the same impact for a little bit fewer dollars.
That's what I was gonna say, you know, allow the staff to be creative, use other resources, and figure out a way to have it come in on budget. I think, I think you can do it.
It's part of the challenge.
And on the entryways, Dan, is there any way we can create that wow effect without a sign, um, at this time with the budget that we have? Uh, so that we're putting those funds to good use and get that effect that we want people to know that you are in Alamosa now?
Yeah.
Can we do that?
We can do it.
With the money?
It doesn't have the impact without the sign, uh, but we can certainly, it, it draws attention to the, the entry by having the landscape there, you know you've arrived someplace. Um, but the, the monument sign, the, the whole point of the landscape is to supplement and draw attention to the sign and enhance the, the quality of the, the gateway experience as you drive in.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Gregel?
Uh, one more comment if I may, mayor, uh, in, uh, comments that councillor Hensley and councillor Broyles made. I, I'd rather let staff, if we start coming back and forth, back and forth, it's only gonna delay the, the whole process. I, I think we could trust staff to go ahead and do what tried and, and move forward with it and not have to come back to us again, you know, and spend this, all this time back and forth, back and forth stuff, so, 'cause you're gonna get the same discussion again when you bring it back, probably, so.
Okay, councillor Broyles, do you have any more comments? Nope. Charlie?
Yeah, that's what I agree, I agree, the staff, you know, has the ability to figure it out, how to come in in thirty thousand. There's, there's a lot of things you can do, if you're creative, and if you come, if you come in on thirty thousand, I don't think you have to come back.
Yeah, these photos were just illustrations of what could be done. I haven't done a, a true physical design, and I'd be more than happy to bring back a final design for your review before.
Okay, so.
We move forward.
Councillor Hensley, councillor Gregel, are you gonna have anything to say?
No, I'm sorry.
I, I think we trust you, so just go ahead and.
So we do not need to bring back?
No.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion. And councillor, I would like to thank you all, you started off at this end and that end, and you came together and worked together and collaborated to make this possible. Thank you so much, appreciate it. Start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have the first reading of ordinance number sixteen dash twenty-eighteen.
Thank you mayor, um, this is actually, um, two different items. We have an ordinance before you, um, that would be first reading and set for a public hearing, um, and then also a resolution. The resolution is, um, much more straightforward in regards to the work session that council held on May second. It was at that point that council discussed what other communities are doing, um, both because of this extreme dry nature we are in right now, but also just recognizing the environment we live in on an ongoing basis as well, was to look at, um, a conservation or voluntary watering restrictions. When we had that discussion at your work session, we were under the impression at that time that Montavista was going to have something that where odd-numbered homes water on the odd days, and even-numbered homes water on the even days. It's our understanding, um, based on their, um, council meeting communication, that they received input from residents that that type of system is challenging for those who have, um, sprinkler systems, automated sprinkler systems, so they've modified their restrictions. It still limits the watering the same way, but they've modified the language to be that odd-numbered addresses water on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, and even-numbered addresses water on Wednesdays, Fridays, and Sundays, and that nobody is watering on Mondays. Um, what we brought before you tonight is a draft resolution that mirrors Montavista's, um, and it also includes language that if someone, they should only water between six P.M. and ten A.M., but then it also allows three areas where the restrictions do not apply. The watering of vegetable gardens or new plant material, watering essential to preserve turf such as heavy public use, and watering for up to twenty-one days to establish new turf from seed or sod. So the resolution, um, before you, and what was directed by council was to make it voluntary, so that language is added in the resolution as well. The other item that is before you is an ordinance that better defines what it means, or what constitutes wasting water. Um, currently in the Alamosa ordinance, code of ordinances, um, there's a statement that prohibits the wasting of water, but that's it. It doesn't explain what wasting of water really is. And as the city attorney was drafting the resolution, he came across that and, and the language that's included in Denver's, um, regulations, and thought that this would probably be an appropriate time to add that clarity to our ordinances. And so, um, it's just a definition of, of, or examples of what is con, considered wasting of water, um, such as routine watering of turf more than three days per week, except for the following. And you'll see that, that very much mirrors what we put in the resolution. So, to establish new turf, they can do that, watering of new plant material, heavy public use, um, or if someone's installing an irrigation system and they need to test it and repair it, and something like that. It also defines, um, wasting as watering with spray irrigation between the hours of ten A.M. and six P.M., so it's in the middle of the day when the water is not as useful to the, um, areas that are being watered. Watering landscaped areas during rain or high wind. Applying water for irrigation to an impervious surface such as a street, parking lot, alley, sidewalk, I think that's what we hear a lot about, um, from residents. Using water instead of a broom or mop to clean out outdoor impervious surfaces such as sidewalks. Allowing water to pool or flow across the ground into a drainage way such as gutters, streets, or alleys. Failing to repair for a period of more than ten days after notice a leaking or damaged irrigation system. Or washing vehicles with a hose that lacks an automatic shut-off, so the hose is just running as they, they wash their vehicle. So, those are the two items before council tonight, um, and you would need to have two different votes, one on the resolution, one on the ordinance.
Thank you, Heather.
I should also mention, um, clearly, um, if something is approved tonight, we will use the, um, utility bills, social media, and other forms available to the city to get information out to the community.
Okay. Eric?
One other exception that was striking me as I was listening to Heather, um, setting forth the definitions of water wasting, uh, the ordinance also makes an exception for watering turf more than three days a week if what you're doing is syringing golf course greens, and I had to look up what that means. Um, but, that was in Denver's regulations, and that syringing is applying water during the heat of the day, uh, in order to be able to, to counteract the drying effects on very short turf, like golf course greens have with the, with the short cutting, you gotta do something to cool and moisten that, or you, you just fry them on really hot days.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Okay, council?
Can I?
Councillor Gregel?
Can I make a comment, uh, thank you mayor.
You're welcome.
Mayor, I, I sit on a water board, and I visited with a lot of water people throughout the whole valley, and the picture that's being drawn out there right now is, we're looking at a, at the drought that we had back in two thousand two and two thousand three. It's, it's almost coming to that same thing. So, i- in looking at, at the, uh, ordinance part, I'd rather see something, instead of volunteer, let, let's do something where we start doing something about conservation. You know, I, I appreciate that we're asking voluntarily, but I think, I think people would realize that we need to do something instead of volunteering, and I, I think that, some other kinda language, maybe even knock out that word volunteer, and, and let's set something up close to what Montavista's doing, or something like that, and, and let's start, let's start conserving water, because we're having a big problem there, and, and it's, it's gonna happen, and I think if, for the city to take the lead and, as other groups, and, and start conserving water, I think that's the direction we need to go.
Thank you councillor Gregel, councillor Broyles?
Well, I, I respectfully defer a little bit here, uh, because I think, I think we start off voluntary and monitor and see how it's going. I'd rather, I'd rather put on a voluntary basis, because I'm not sure we have the staff to monitor if we make it, uh, a regulation. And, uh, I think, I rethink the people of Alamosa, if they understand, uh, they, that they will volunteer and step up and, and be, be responsible.
Councillor Gregel?
Well, maybe let me ask the city manager what it would take if we were to go that direction instead of just volunteer, 'cause even voluntarily, we'd probably have to have something out there, somebody looking at it.
So, um, from a staff perspective, we, regardless if you do voluntary or not voluntary, we wouldn't be out there manning it. We would be treating it like we treat our other nuisance ordinances, in regards to, a lot of it is based on complaints. Um, now, if our nuisance officers are out there and, and they see something, then they would follow up with that on a warning or something like that, if it was not voluntary. But, um, the intent from the city would never be to, or staff would never be to recommend that we hire staff. Um, it would just be to treat it as we do our other nuisance ordinances, which is by a complaint basis.
Councillor, uh, I'll let him respond, then councillor Hensley, you'll be next.
How difficult would it be to remove that volunteer and, and, and design and put it together like, uh, almost what Montavista or other communities are doing?
So city attorney, is it as easy as removing the wording voluntary from the resolution?
Uh, yes, and substituting mandatory. Um, and ju- just so we're clear, if that's the resolution, which is.
Right.
Um, the, it's similar to the ordinance, uh, the ordinance is mandatory, period. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, um, Heather, the major difference between the two, other than some other further definitions of what constitutes water wastage, is that the resolution sets up this, um, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, versus Tuesday, Thursday, uh, Sunday, whatever the days are. It, it's that day thing, that's what's in the resolution, so if you make that mandatory, that's what you're getting. The non-wasting will be mandatory if you do the ordinance. So that's, that's really what you're doing, is you're making the, the rationing, if you will, of what days you can water mandatory.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Count, you're welcome, councillor Hensley?
Councillor Daniel would like to speak.
Oh, councillor Daniel.
Uh, thank you mayor, thank you councillor Hensley. Um, I wanted to say, I, I was concerned about this, um, ordinance a little at the beginning, 'cause I, I was worried about, um, you know, people's grass and how they're gonna, you know, do what they need to do. We had a lot of concerns last year when we changed the water rates, um, so I think people are automatically conserving now, 'cause they don't wanna spend as much money on their yards as they did last year. Um, I think the concern about the, the drought is, is very real, uh, but I am in agreement with councillor Broyles, that I would like to keep the voluntary language to start, um, in the resolution. And I really appreciate staff finding other cities that have language already written, and taking the feedback that we received from some of it that, um, their attempt at this, and then using, you know, what work, what works for us, and so thank you for finding that. And so thank you for finding that language. But I'm more in support of the voluntary language versus it not being voluntary right now.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Daniel. Okay. Councilor Hensley?
I guess I'd support the volunteer too at the beginning. Let's at least see how it is. Being, again, I guess I'll refer back to being from California and always being in a drought. A lot of things, I think, just having things come through or bills. We start getting that culture of conserving. That pressure does pass to our neighbors and to each other. And a lot of times people don't want to be the one that's not doing the right thing. So I think a lot of it is education as well. And so the thought of at least trying it this way as a volunteer and see where it goes from there, that would be my opinion.
Thank you, Councilor Hensley. Councilor Vehill?
Thank you. I'm getting from most people up here that it's voluntary. I guess my question to you would be how severe does this drought have to be to make it mandatory? How bad does the weather and the water situation have to get to make it mandatory?
Councilor Grego?
I'll make attempt to answer this. It's, we're in trouble. We're in trouble out there. And I don't know what, come back then and then redo it and say now it's volunteer? I'd rather, I mean, now it's mandatory. I'd rather we just do it right away and let people start conserving right away. But with that, I, to kind of get this going, just the first part, you could still discuss the volunteer of the resolution. I'll make a motion that we pass on-
I've got one more council who want to make a comment. Council, council?
No, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead. You go ahead.
Okay, just to keep the ball moving there, Mayor. First reading ordinance number 16, 2008, on first reading and set it for a public hearing at, on, what is it? What day is that?
June 6th.
June 6th at seven o'clock or sooner after.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not? Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
It did.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Touchpads giving me issues today. All right. Let's see. So now we have to go to the resolution, right?
Correct.
Okay. Council? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion on resolution number 9, 2018. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Holly. Okay, up next. Motion authorizing the city manager to reclassify the part-time maintenance worker position.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
At the last meeting, the council requested that staff take a look at what would, what it would cost in order to extend the hours at the Ricky Recycling Center. Part of that is reclassifying a part-time employee to full-time. The estimated annual cost for that is approximately $16,000. We never know what an employee might choose from a health insurance or some stuff like that. But that $16,000 includes both salary and the benefits of reclassifying that. For 2018, since we are halfway through the year essentially at this point in time, we estimate the cost to behalf of that, which is approximately $8,000. We feel, looking at our previous budgets, that we can probably absorb that $8,000 this year instead of doing a budget amendment. But then when we prepare the 2019 budget, we would obviously include that full amount in that annual budget. And we would take a look at the utility bills in regards to what that cost would be. As you know, we try to operate our utilities as an enterprise fund, which means we charge for the amounts that it costs. It runs almost as a business minus the sales tax that has been used to offset the water treatment plant. The estimated cost is probably, you know, I don't want it to get locked into a corner, but it would probably be less than or around 50 cents a month per bill type of thing. So it's not something that's dramatic, but it is something that these costs need to cover themselves. And so the item before you is if you wish to reclassify that position from a half-time to full-time position.
Thank you, Heather. Council? Councilor Brawls?
Well, I think the need's been established. I think the demand is there based on observation and talking to the citizens that I've talked to. So, you know, I'd be supportive of it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Brawls. Anyone else? All right, let's get a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve, that we, excuse me, that we authorize the city manager to reclassify the part-time maintenance worker one position at the Ricky Recycling Center to full-time.
I second that, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, not? Please start voting. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Mayor, I had a question if you don't mind.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. So now that this has been passed, how will that reflect in the hours down there?
What we could do is see how quickly we can implement this and then we can get word out to council and the public on what the hours look like. We'll clearly take any comments or input that council wants to send us as well as any of the public wants to send us input, and we'll evaluate what makes sense.
Okay, thank you. All right, up next, we have a direction on amendment to the sign code.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Councilor Grego's second half question. And let me start off just by showing you a few signs that form the basis of why this is up for your consideration. This first one is near the intersection of Highway 285 and Highway 160 on a vacant lot. The sign is, as you see in red, three feet by six feet. And as I will discuss with you later, the sign code currently in the UDC limits this sign to two feet by four feet. Limits any sign on a vacant lot in this district to two feet by four feet. And the two foot by four foot is shown on this sign to show you how much smaller that would be. It is, this is not an uncommon sign. This particular vacant lot, as you I'm sure are aware, has had large signs on it for a long time. Under however the changed sign code, those are not allowable. Here is another sign. This is right, this is up right now. Desiree Cordova actually went out and took pictures of all of these signs and measured them up for us. So she took this one today. This is on the train pavilion. Just, you can go walk around the corner and you'd see that one. And it is 11 and 3/4 feet by 3 feet. The total, we'll look at it in a moment, but as I recall, the limit on signs is 32 square feet. So this one is slightly too big. And then we just had the presentation on the Cinco de Mayo. This is the sign that's up down there at the youth softball field, down by the bank shot. Nine feet by three feet. It's 27 square feet. So it is just under what that maximum sign limit would be. And what I don't have is a picture of a proliferation of signs. Because the other issue that the sign code addresses is not only size of signs, but also that you can only have on a vacant lot, one sign. And if it's not a vacant lot, you can have, depending on the zone that you're in, one sign per X number of lineal feet. So you've got to have a certain amount of distance between signs. As I'm sure you all recall, the pavilion frequently sees more than one sign, as do other locations. So if we go to the sign code, this is the provision of the sign code that sets these limitations out. And I cut and pasted some of it to try to get it on one page. But it's table 21-4-702A that sets out what we're talking about. And these are all temporary signs. So you go to the table here under temporary signs. Maximum sign height, we haven't really, don't really worry about that. But maximum sign area in the commercial business district, which is right downtown, is eight square feet. In the commercial area is 32 square feet. The maximum, so we talked about some of those issues. The maximum number of signs in the commercial area is one sign per 200 linear feet of frontage. And in the commercial business district, it's one per lot. But scroll on down, we have limitations particularly relevant to vacant land. And for temporary freestanding signs, which all of these that I showed you pictures of are, you have to apply the CBD zone standards if the subject property is less than two acres, which most of these are, and maybe probably all of the vacant lot signs. And when you apply those CBD limits, you're cut down to an eight-square-foot sign, one per lot, which is not what has been going on historically within the city of Alamosa. So that's what we bring up. And then Heather probably wants to jump in, and I'll let her, on timing of these.
Well, and I think when Eric and I first discussed this, I glazed over the concept of why do we have sign regulations to begin with? So if you take out the political signs and the banners that I think we all are probably in support of because historically we've seen them and we want to support these events and the candidates and those types of things. If you take that off of your mind, when a sign code is created for different communities, it is an important tool to manage how your community looks. And what has been extremely challenging, and you've heard the city attorney talk about it before as we've gone through the code, is the court cases have made it to where you cannot look at content. You cannot regulate signs and say, we want to allow political signs, but not commercial signs. It's, we cannot take a look at the language. And so when Eric and I first kind of talked about this, I thought, well, we'll just, you know, allow it or something. The concern with that is then you have to allow any sign. And so you could have any type of commercial advertising as well, which I think is sometimes perceived a little bit differently. Then the next question is, well, do we care if there's a whole bunch of commercial signs at the corner of 285 and 6? And I said, well, we are also talking on the agenda beautification of our gateways. And I would argue that that is one area that sees high traffic and beautification is something we should take a look at. Now, I'm not saying all of this to lead you into saying we need to limit it, but it was something that when I first started thinking about it, I forgot what is the core philosophical reason communities have sign ordinances. Now, that said, what we wanted to try to do is to see if there was some simple ways, creative ways, similar to what you just approved for the residential right of way, that is, there's some periods of time that we could, at least from a political sign perspective, allow us not to enforce some of these codes. Now, we also take the risk that we may see some commercial speech at the same time. But again, they have to get the property owner approval and all of those types of things. And so that concept could be applied to solve some of this. Now, that does not help us with the continued support of some of the banners and those types of considerations as well. So as the city attorney laid it out, you've got the concept of size, but then you also have the concept of how many can you have on one location? And I just wanted to make sure I put that caution in there of, I don't know if we want to head down the road of just lifting it entirely because there are some significant issues there as well. Is that what you thought I was going to add?
Exactly. She's predictable.
So with that, we would turn it over to council.
Okay, council. I know Councilor Grego wanted to go first on this one, so I'll turn it over to you, Councilor Grego.
I agree with some of your comments that you made, city manager. And even that sign there, that does, you come into town, it doesn't look bad. The sign on, and there's been several signs on that train pavilion deal. You know, I could see if something is really, where it's going to really make our community bad, look bad, then I could see what you're saying, you know? But this thing, it seems to come up every election that we discuss signs and then finally we, we finally put together something where we allow so many signs. And then we come back the next election and we discuss it again. But if we can work something out where we can regulate it some way, you know, as you were saying, city manager, I would really appreciate that.
And, and, Councilor, I forgot one of the ideas that the city attorney had come up with, which is for this specific location, if council wanted to exempt this location from the sign code, you're not as much at risk because the city is the owner. And so we approve what signs go up and what signs don't go up. I would not recommend you exempt the private property that's at the corner of 285 and 6. My recommendation for that would be to give a window during the political season type of thing because we don't have control over what's going to go up there. And so there's some play of some different tools there.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hensley.
So I'll say something and then Councilor Daniel is after me.
Okay.
I'm two for one, sorry.
Okay, so good.
So I just, I think then during election time, I kind of like the idea of just allowing a little bit more freedom, sort of like what we did earlier tonight. That would be my choice. It would be hard. I just imagine some of these property owners, in the sense they don't want to necessarily have to pick who they're going to allow have a sign. Somebody may have hit them up first and then somebody says afterwards, they go, oh, well, gosh, now I wish I had your sign on there. I just think it gets a little sticky. And it appears to me most of the landowners are kind of allow whoever wants a sign. Some may not, but it's their choice. So I kind of like the idea of we don't necessarily get as picky during the election time similar to before. And then I'll turn it over to Councilor Daniel, if that's okay with you, Mayor. Sorry.
Councilor Daniel? Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank Heather for reminding us why we have sign codes to start with. This was one of the things I was really interested in when we redid the development code because I think we have some really bright signs. We have some different things that were hard to regulate. And so it's not just political signs. And so I have two questions for Eric. Eric, does it, would it be said that we're limiting speech if we design our thing around, design our practices around election season only? And does that put us at risk for being held liable for not allowing other free speech potentially? And then for alternative number two, allowing a limited number of days outside of the regular election seasons to accommodate other campaign-type signs, are you thinking like a limited, like 14 days or two months? I just, I'd like a little more clarification on number two as an alternative because I'm intrigued by it and I think I'd like to have a little bit of flexibility, but I just want to make sure I understand the ramifications of that flexibility.
Yes, and I, for your first question, I didn't hear whether you were talking about election signs or election times.
Sorry, times with a T?
Very good. So that is not a problem. I think that's not a problem. Todd Messenger was a little bit more conservative on that and I think he would indicate that, well, you're starting to skirt people looking through what your ordinance actually says to what you're trying to do. You know, maybe so, but we're still complying with, I think, the holding of Reed v. Gilbert. So I don't have a problem with doing election times. If we don't call it election times, we set out those specific dates. And as to your second question, I hadn't come up with a number of days, but I did think about accommodating special elections or other kinds of times that it may be appropriate to have signs that just don't happen to fall within the specified dates that we set forth. Of course, the issue with that is how in the world are we going to keep track of who has had how many days of signage up on their property? I can look at the chief. I could think that would be an enforcement nightmare.
Thank you, Eric. I appreciate, I appreciate that. So I- So, I don't think I have any other questions, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Daniel. My question, Eric, would be, I know that there are a lot of events that go on in the summer, and these events put up real nice classy signs, like the Rails and Ales Early Iron and the Summer Fest. They put up real nice classy signs that really look good to our community. I know in some cases, some of those events may fall around the election time, and some of them may not. How do we ensure that we still allow them the opportunity to place those signs to draw people to our community?
Well, I think that was Councilor Daniel's question. And so, this is real time. You get to see me kicking ideas over in my head real time, which is not always a pretty sight, just ask Heather. But, I think that right now, the sign code is set up such that temporary signs like this are exempted from getting permits. We could require permits for doing something, say we gave X number of days outside of our set seasons where we say it's okay to put up a temporary sign, and you can put up a temporary sign for thirty days at other times, but if you're outside those times, you have to get a permit. Then we have an easier way of tracking who has burned up how many days of their discretionary temporary signage they might have available to them, and that, I think, could be fairly enforceable.
Okay, so Heather, I know.
The other concept is, so it's just as scary when I kick around ideas as well, is, you know, would we want to still allow it, but they're smaller size and it's one per lot? And so that's essentially what the current one is right now, and so, they can still put it up, they would just be smaller, and it would be one per lot.
I'm not really a big fan of the smaller and one-per-lot. So, council, what would you all like to do?
And to make it clear, you're not necessarily, you can make a motion to try to vote on direction, but it is just to provide direction for staff to draft something, and we would bring it back before you. And then the direction we would have for enforcement is, we would enforce in line with the direction you give tonight for what we're drafting. Is that correct, City Attorney?
Yes, that's what we would propose to do. And that just brings up another issue. There are other signs out there right now that are not compliant with the sign code and that we, and that would not be compliant with the kind of changes that we have talked about tonight. And we propose to educate those people about what the code says.
And they're not the normal type of signs you would see. They're a little bit more different from a size perspective, so we will work with them on an education perspective.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Hensley, then Councilor Grego.
I was just going to move to give direction for you to go ahead and put something together. The way I see it, so we'll see if everybody agrees, but the idea of giving some freedom during election time anyway, to allowing, and then potentially maybe looking at, what was the word used, in the sense of if somebody wanted to get permission to use?
Discretionary, discretionary days to use outside of those specified days.
And maybe it's something where you record it, or whatever you want to do, whatever you feel is the easiest way to do it.
And then, did you want to exempt, I could name probably the three city properties that we've traditionally put the banners up as well?
Before I seconded, did you also want to talk about the size of, I know there was concern about, I know Rodeo puts out a really nice big side.
I don't have any issues with size.
Early iron. So you're saying, leave the size the way it is?
Yeah, I like, I think it's okay, like the one that you showed with Montoya? I forget whose sign it was. Yes. Honestly, that to me wasn't really a concern during election time.
The exemption, I think, when we proposed it, would be that it would, that for that period of time, we are not restricting the size nor the number.
Yes.
Well, we may want to restrict the size to thirty-two square feet or something, I don't know, but.
So to some direction on that.
Maybe you don't. Fifty square feet.
I don't think we should put a size on it.
I think we're open in a kind of way.
Because the owners are going to only allow certain things as well, so I really wouldn't recommend us putting a size restriction.
If somebody wants to buy a sign that's that big, and.
The signs that were shown.
We need you, the microphone, we need the microphone on, sir.
I was going to say, the signs that we were showing, none of them exceeded thirty-two square feet. That's eight by four, that's a pretty big sign. Or even if you take nine by three, that's a big sign, that's twenty-seven square feet.
So what Eric is saying is though, have we taken into account that somebody could go bigger than that, and are we concerned? I'm not, but that's what Eric is saying, is people could keep getting bigger and bigger.
Well, yeah, and I think, I think, just for, I think thirty-two square feet sign is big enough. Even for Iron Festival, I don't see why that, you know, forty, you go ten by four for forty square feet, I mean, that's becoming pretty outrageous.
Eric, you next.
No, I was just, I pulled up this one that's on the pavilion right now. It's actually, I didn't multiply it out, but it's just under thirty-six square feet, so it's slightly over. I would suggest to you that we have a very competent police department, and they probably would not cite that sign.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Daniel, I believe I heard you say something, but I'm not for sure if you wanted to say something.
I did, thank you, Mayor. I apologize for that, I was trying to figure out the conversation part. I would like to ask staff to also look at, instead of maybe a certain number of days, think about what it would be if someone was doing an event, and they could have the sign up for a certain amount of days before the event up to after the event. If that would be easier, if the signs were dated. It was just something I was thinking about when we talked about early iron and things like that. I like the idea of the flexibility for those events, without necessarily needing to count the days that we didn't have to, as a total, but maybe before the event to after the event for signs that are bigger than what our current sign code limits them to. Just a thought, I don't know if that's possible, if that would be okay to add.
I would love to do regulations like that, but the Supreme Court is not on board with that approach. So, here's the rule of thumb for what we can do with sign codes. If you have to read the sign to determine whether it complies with the code, you're doing content-based restriction.
Okay, Councilor Grego.
Okay, I will go back to the motion that was put on the floor, and I don't know if we.
You going to second it?
If they got a muddy direction that we put there, and I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we get clarification on that one more time?
I think it's good enough. I feel confident I can come at you guys with something that you can talk about.
Okay, so do we really need an official vote? Councilor B. Hill walked out, he had to take a quick break. Do we need to do this, or?
I don't believe so. We'll bring a proposed ordinance change to you, and in the meantime, we will not be enforcing things that we think are in compliance with what that change might look like.
Well, councillor, at a point of direction here, we do have a motion on the floor and a second.
Well, and now you have a full board again, too, so go ahead. So now we have a motion, and we have a second, we have all councillors present. You can vote, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. All right. Up next, we have committee reports. Counselor, you're killing me. All right, Counselor Hensley.
It's actually for Councilor Daniel.
Okay, Councilor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two reports. I went to Crime Stoppers the end of April, and they are a really engaged group. They talked about the, getting more Crime Stoppers information out into the communities and reminding the entire valley that this is a valley-wide Crime Stoppers. So they're actually going to start meeting in the different communities throughout the valley to hopefully get more than just Alamoosa-based citizen participants. Right now, there are law enforcement agencies that participate from around the valley, but there aren't other elected officials or anything like that from the other communities. So, they're really hoping that that changes. There were no reward requests this time, and then they are working, you know, on other ways to get more of the radio spots that we heard the presentation about honoring our first responders, and so they are a part of that and are assisting with that as well. The other thing that I went to was the Alamoosa Housing Authority, that was on the 25th. They did appreciate the city's assistance with removing dumpsters and putting locks and dumpster gates and things like that, but the dumpsters are now on the Housing Authority property, and they've noticed a decrease in illegal dumping already, so they wanted to make sure that the city heard the thanks for that and the support. They will be going entirely smoke-free on August 1st. There are some residents who have concerns about that, so councillors, you may hear about that from people. It is a policy that is going to go into effect. They've been doing a lot of education around that with the residents and working with family members and how they're going to implement that. There are some guidelines around, from the state and national level, who've implemented these types of policies before. There are some guidelines around how to hold residents accountable and what that looks like. And I think the Housing Authority staff are really, you know, working hard and being diligent about how they're going to work with their residents. They had, felt like they had really good communication with Eric, and he helped them with the bylaws recently, to make sure that they could, they would follow the rules that they were supposed to, so thank you, Eric, for that. And then they are working on getting the backflow preventers everywhere, and they wanted the city to know that they appreciated the guidance from Public Works, and that they were working on getting that, getting that taken care of. They are going to be putting in more sprinklers and some other beautifications, the things that are happening there. They will follow the watering restrictions and try to do zero escaping as much as possible, but there are some limitations that they have, but it was really informative first meeting for me. So, any questions about that, counsel, either one, Crime Stoppers or Housing Authority?
No questions. Thank you. Thank you for your report. Counselor Grego.
I did attend a Recreation Advisory Special Meeting, and it was quite a lengthy meeting, and we discussed several things. One idea that the City Manager did discuss with me is the fact that, once minutes are approved, they're going to be, they're going to be posted, so everybody can go in and read the minutes from every, all the different type of boards. So, because if I kept on going here, we'd be here till twelve, so, but we'll be getting the minutes on each of these different boards.
Thank you so much, Councilor Grego. Okay, any further committee reports? Okay, if not, staff announcements.
Chief, if you want to head up here, and as he's coming up, I'll remind you of some upcoming meetings. The first one isn't upcoming, but it's just, we were able to attend and for some participate in a Peace Officers Memorial today. I think it's always a wonderful opportunity on an annual basis to recognize what's given to our communities to keep us safe and to make us the communities we are, and so that's a great opportunity to be able to say thank you. Chief, if you want to do your update.
Sure. Several months ago, we had a bomb threat at the airport as a result of that hot wash or debrief, whatever you want to call it. Department of Homeland Security, they identified a regional need, which is a explosives dog. After they evaluated that need for the resource, there's a local grant through the Department of Homeland Security that we use currently to get our radios, replace the radios, and the state recommended to the local representative that she contact me and urged me to apply for a grant through this, through the Department of Homeland Security, to get a explosives dog as a resource for the region. The reasoning behind this was because we have an established and proven K-9 program, so they recommended that she approach our agency to do that. We're not the only one that has a K-9 program, but Mona Vista's is a new program, so they want an established and proven program. So I met with the representative, we have completed that grant application. I ran it through finance, ran it through the City Manager. The grant would include all costs related to purchasing a new dog, for the training, for the outfitting of a vehicle, really any related cost for startup. The sustainability portion of it would be an annual application back to DHS for funding, for operational costs and such. The only thing that I would have to absorb through the grant would be, as a specialized pay, I give the officer assigned to run a K-9 unit, five percent incentive. That covers the costs of upkeep of the animal training, the daily tasks, things like that. I think by talking with City Manager and with finance, that that's very obtainable, so we wouldn't have to add anything to our budget for sustainability of that portion of it. They've also relayed to me that if at any point in time, we decide we don't want to keep the resource, that we can turn it back over to them, and they would assign it to another agency in the valley. So, I just wanted to make you aware that we have applied for that resource. It does look very promising. I mean, they urged us to apply for it, they're pushing us to get the grant in, and because of the, it was twenty, twenty-five thousand, a little over twenty-five thousand dollars for the initial grant, and because of that investment, it looks very promising throughout the years. And this, this funding is a mandated funding through the federal system, so they don't think that it's going to go away. So it's very promising that we would be able to get that grant continually for sustainability for that resource.
Okay. Yes, Heather?
If there's no other questions, I can move us along for staff updates.
Thank you, Chief, for exploring the resources to help keep, thank you for exploring resources like that to keep our communities safe. Anything that we can do to protect our citizens from harm is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
As our other chief is approaching the podium, you do have a special council meeting next week. It's an executive session for the evaluation of the city prosecutor. You also, we will be having a public meeting on May 30th at 6:00 PM. The location to be determined to discuss homelessness and receive input from the community on that item. And then also, June 1st is Summer Fest on the Rio. So Chief, if you want to provide an update.
Mayor, council, in case you haven't seen it, the U.S. Forest Service announced yesterday that they were going to be introducing Stage One fire ban by Monday on all the national forest properties, based off of a phone conference call yesterday. It's also going to affect all the BLM properties, the sand dunes, the wildlife refuges. Consequently, most of the counties in the valley are also going to follow suit, including Alamoosa County will be initiating a fire ban starting Monday, which is a Stage One, and that will continue, and then as the drought, if it keeps going like it is, we'll probably end up in a Stage Two, I would imagine, sometime in June at the rate it's going, so. Predictive services are saying that we won't see any relief on any of this or any moisture till the latter part of July at the earliest. One other announcement, on the 31st of May at 5:00, over at Station One, we're going to do a dedication ceremony placing the new engine into service, so. I'd like to extend an invitation to you and all the staff, and of course, all of the public within this, you know, all of our citizens, so.
What day is that again?
May 31st, it's the last Thursday of the month, 5:00. Over at Station One, yeah.
And then we will also get some more information out, so you'll get an email, and we'll do some press releases and social media.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And Mark, if you want to head on up? This will be the last of our staff updates.
Get me started.
Sorry, we wanted to give you an update on the outfall location from a timing cost perspective, and then also the work that will start beginning on first.
Okay, on the outfall project.
Okay, on the outfall project, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment has required that we extend the outfall to the low-flow thread of the Rio Grande. We had intended to occupy the previous outfall from when that facility was lagoons, and they have rejected that plan. So that means we have to extend a pipe and protect that pipe approximately 600 feet. And that has delayed the project and probably increased the project by 50%. I don't have an exact estimate from the engineers yet, but that's my guess. Because it's not only the length of the pipe, but we have to armor that pipe. So it'll have to be buried in concrete and then riprap. And we have met with the department and tried to vigorously press our case on not having to do that, and that was rejected. On the First Street, we, there's a public notice out. Excel is currently working on the First Street project area, moving their facilities out of our way so that our road project can proceed. Currently, it's anticipated for that to take through June 15th, and then we will start our road project once they're clear. They may bleed a little past that date. I don't want to get into the situation where we were at last year where we had both projects going at the same time and much confusion. So we will hold our project until they are clear of us. There will be intermittent road closures and lane closures during the time that Excel is working. The intent on First Street is that we will, once we start, we will close the entire street for seven weeks. I think that's...
And you might recall from last year, we did pretty extensive outreach in regards to when it was going to happen, what the public could expect, what the alternative routes would be and all of that. We still plan to do that for our portion of it. At this point, when Excel's doing their project, we can do a little bit of public notice, but we're not in control of that. And so we're really relying on Excel to make sure that they're doing the proper notification as well. So that's why you haven't seen very much right now in regards to what, what's going on now, other than us trying to let people know what is going on. But we don't want to provide misinformation on Excel's project. Once we get to the point where it's the city's project, you will see the same extensive outreach that we do with the public.
Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you. Okay. Up next, is that all? Heather for staff announcement?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have Local Liquor Licensing Authority Action. Ms. Holly?
Could I interrupt for one sec before we get started? Do you mind?
Sure, go ahead.
Chris, Counselor Daniels has a question for Eric before we start this next section.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, because this is a quasi-judicial hearing and I'm not, or if this is one, I, maybe it is, and I'm not present, I'm not allowed to participate in this discussion, correct?
You know, that's a very interesting question. Had you adopted your policy, that would be correct. You don't have your policy adopted yet, but I would advise you not to participate because it is a quasi-judicial proceeding, yes. However, there will be an executive session afterwards, so you may not want to go to bed yet.
So how are we going to, how are we going to do this? We're going to have our disconnect right now and then we're going to...
Oh, no, she can, she can watch.
Oh, she just can't participate?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome. Okay. Ms. Holly, is that you?
Actually, our city attorney conducts these hearings.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Eric.
So just a little background for counsel, we haven't done one of these in a while. And then for the applicant as well, this is a hearing that is conducted pursuant to statute at which the applicant bears the burden of proof of demonstrating to counsel that the needs and desires of the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood support the issuance of this liquor license that they are looking for. And the neighborhood pursuant to longstanding council resolution, it's been over 26 years now, is defined as the city limits plus a one-mile area outside of those city limits. And typically, the way that we will do this hearing is that the applicant will make a brief presentation to counsel. It can be as long as you want, but it doesn't have to be long. And I understand that we have a set of petitions that have been turned in. If you want to talk about those, that's fine. We have them here. Holly has them and will mark them as Exhibit A so that we can make reference to them. And Holly, if you want to just start circulating them to counsel, that would be fine. And then after the applicant has made its presentation, anybody wishing to speak either in favor of or in opposition to the issuance of this license will be welcome to come forward. And if there's a line, you can just stand in line and take your turn in the microphone addressing counsel with respect to that. Then we will close the public hearing once that's complete. Counsel does sometimes ask questions of the applicant during their presentation, so just be aware of that. And we'll move from there. And Mayor, if you, if counsel is of a mind to ask questions, if you would conduct the orchestration of that, that would be good, because you know who's got their button up.
Okay, I sure will. Thank you very much, Eric. Okay, at this time, I will open up the needs and desires hearing. If we can have the applicants come up to the podium and...
Let me just interject something else that I decided that would be a good idea to do. I will also introduce the preliminary findings of the clerk dated May 8th, 2018 as Exhibit B.
Okay. All right. Feel free to start talking and tell us a little bit about...
So my wife's a little bit shy since she's owned the bowling alley since 2015, since my dad has passed away. We've ran the bowling alley, we've owned the bowling alley in the family since 1981. It has always been family-oriented. And in 2015, we, my dad had leased it for nine years and we took it back over in 2015. And we put in over a quarter million dollars in remodeling it from, from ground up. New carpet, new roof, new parking lot, new bathrooms, new, new, everything basically. Redid the bowling machines and we've been doing all the upkeep and working with the community. We work with Irwin Young right now for Kids Like Me, and that is a program whose parents, who's either in jail or on drugs or in rehab at this time. And every first Sunday of the month, we offer free bowling to kids who are in need. And we are currently doing a kids' bowl-free program for the summer. All they have to do is go online and sign up, and they get two free games of bowling any day of the week for the whole summer. And this is to help get some of the kids off the street. And a lot of the bowling leagues, you know, they work all week, they work hard. And when they come out to bowl, they would like to have a beer and bowl. And we do just that. In all the years that we've had liquor license there, we have never had one altercation, one incident, one fight, one DUI or anything like that. It has always been family-oriented or even tagged for underage selling. We, we are very vigorous about carding everybody and anything like that. But as far as I know, we have never had one citation for anything like that. It has always been family-based.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so very much. Okay, counsel, any comments? Anyone? Okay, Counselor Hensley? No? Well, thank you very much for sharing that.
Mayor, I have, I have a question if I could. So you have given the clerk a packet of petitions that I think she counted 183 signatures on. How were those petitions gathered?
So we basically just had them at the counter. And anybody that came in, we, they seen the sign on the door and we had petitions on the counter. And as I was photocopying them to bring them over, I did realize that some of them were out of, out of town. A lot of them were San Luis and some were La Jara and stuff like that. But we didn't catch that until we had photocopied them. But yeah, we didn't really go out and push it.
And then a question for Holly. The posting of the license was required to have occurred before this hearing. Can you confirm when that license was posted?
Yeah. So the original posting was actually done on March 26th. And they were supposed to come for a hearing at the previous meeting, but we didn't, I didn't get the legal notice published in the Valley Courier, and that's a requirement of the liquor code. So we couldn't do that. So I did have them update their poster. The original poster was posted March 26th. They updated it with the correct date to reflect the hearing date of today on May 1st.
Okay, Counselor...
Okay, so unless, did counsel have any questions for the applicant?
And counsel, counsel?
Is this question time or we're now...
If you had questions for the applicant, you could ask them questions and then we'll open it up for public comment?
Yeah, of course.
I was going to ask, I saw Sanford, Rosa, Manasa on your, on your petition, but you answered, I think you answered that.
Yes, yeah, we, I didn't realize that when they were signing it, that they were out of town, or I would have notified, I would have let them know. I mean, it was on the counter and we typically have 50 to 100 people there all the time. And it was there for them to sign, but obviously, they didn't read the one-mile radius sentence.
They've had a liquor license before, haven't they? Is this a, can you explain that?
When my dad passed away in 2015, we didn't have the money to transfer it at the time. We were hit with probate taxes and taxes and just, property taxes and stuff like that. So it took us a while, and we were left with quite a few bills, but it took us a while to build up the money to apply for the liquor license. So it did lapse, it did cancel at the time. And when we had the money, then we reapplied. So it didn't cancel after my dad passed away.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, thank you all very, very much. And I appreciate what you're doing for the youth in the community as allowing them to bowl at least, you know, once during the week or something like that.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make one more comment.
Sure.
We are working on some funds for a loan. And we do plan on, I own the property next to that between there and weekends. And we do plan on adding on a building to where we can put go-karts and a laser tag building. And that I will be bringing before City Council because it is residential property, which I'd like to change to commercial property. But I would like to bring go-karts and some laser tag and some more activities to get some of these kids off the street. And that is in the works and within about a year.
Wow, well, thank you so very much for sharing that with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilman.
Thank you. Okay.
Counsel woman.
Go ahead. Yes. Were you going to say something?
I said, thank you, counsel and council.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
So now, we would encourage anybody who wants to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this application to come forward and do so. Please state your name before you start and whether or not you are a resident of the city of Alamosa.
My name is Dela John and I am a resident of Alamosa. I lived here and went to school here. I left for 30 some-odd years and came back. There is absolutely nothing to do in this town. And I think we need to encourage Craig and Donna to get the bowling alley going, to get their, they want to put a pizza place in, so that the kids have something to do and not just the youth that Craig talked about that he helps. But we have college kids all over this town and there is absolutely nothing in this town to do. So I would hope that you guys would pass this so he could get the liquor license just for more clientele, not necessarily to promote the liquor. And I've also talked to Craig and Donna. I attended bar for over 20 years, and in those 20 years, I had to call out the cops once. Because if you run it right and you know what you're doing, you don't have to call the cops. And I believe Craig has that, and so does Donna, and I believe it will be ran correctly and they won't have those kind of problems. So I just encourage you guys to pass this and let him get his liquor license so we have an establishment for the kids, the college kids, and even us old folks for somewhere for us to go and something to do. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have anyone else who'd like to make any comments for our guests? No? Okay. If not, Eric?
The city manager pointed out that it may be not clear. You can certainly come and speak if you're not a resident of the city as well, but just, just let us know that that's the case. There's some thinking going on, but it doesn't look like anybody else wants to speak. Mayor, I think we'll close the public hearing.
Okay, all right. We'll close the public hearing. And Counselor Carson would like to make a comment?
I'd just like to know how we proceed with approving this license. I think, I think we need to move forward with this.
Okay. Eric?
Yeah, so as, as Holly put in the council communication, the, the typical practice has been that you wait until the following meeting in order to consider proposed findings of fact and, and action that I prepare both to grant and to deny the license. But the last couple of times, there have been what appeared to be pretty clear cases and you have made your decision right now, right after the close of the public hearing, and just directed me to prepare only one set of findings, whichever way you leaned to go. And personally, I think that's a much more efficient way to do things, but it's of course up to you.
Okay, so which way is more efficient way to do things?
I think it would be very efficient on, on situations that appear to you to be fairly clear-cut to make a decision tonight and then direct me to prepare written findings consistent with that decision, because your findings do have to be in writing. But that, that doesn't, it simplifies my job, that, which is the efficiency. And it also takes the applicant off of the pins and needles of wondering what in the world council's going to decide.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Counselor Hensley?
So I truly support this. I've been in, in the building. They have done some phenomenal upgrades. I know they're anxious to get going. Their pizza oven's going to be up and running real soon as well. So I move that we go ahead and direct Eric to go ahead and put together the findings for positive to giving them their liquor license.
I'll second that. And I had a comment before your motion, but I'll second that motion. I, I've had the opportunity to know this family for a lot of years and the businesses that they run. Every type of business that they run, their dad has taught them how to run a business and to how to respect customers and build on it. And they've helped this, this community through a lot of years because they have, they've had several businesses that I've seen that they ran and they've run it perfectly. So I agree with your comments, Counselor Hensley. And another thing too, they've got such a large investment out there. And the sooner that, that we can help them start recouping some of those investments, I think the better and it'll help the whole situation. So, thank you.
Okay, great. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? The only comment I would have is I would like to just thank you all for making it this clear-cut by having a good record of not having to call the police officers out but once in 20-something years, I believe you said. That's impressive. Let's keep that going and let's not have to call them out at all for the next 20 years. Okay, start voting.
Liz, can you press the button to abstain for Christina?
Oh, don't make me be upset, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. The motion carried unanimously with Counselor Daniel abstaining.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Holly. All right. Okay, that brings us to counsel comments. Okay, Counselor V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it reminds me really quick, just to thank you, to Mayor Coleman, to our staff. I believe Jolene was involved, maybe Holly a little bit. But a group of center middle school kids came down here last week for the reality store. And I don't teach middle school anymore, so I wasn't directly involved, but they wanted to come back down here because they had such a good time. They saw the fire trucks. Thank you, Chief, for doing that. And Mayor, thank you for showing them how the city of Alamosa works.
You're welcome, Counselor V. Hill. And Heather Heptow as well. And I'm going to tell you what they wanted to do. Everybody from your school wanted to come up here and sit behind the podium with your name plate because you do such a great job in the school. And they all thought they were little mini, Counselor V. and they all thought they were little mini Counselor V. Hills up here. It was fun, thank you. Okay, Counselor Hensley?
Counselor Daniel would like to say something.
Okay, Counselor Daniel, you're free to speak.
Thank you Mayor.
You're welcome.
So I wanted to say, I really appreciated Holly and you as well Mayor, for the skilled nursing league proclamation and going out to the nursing homes that we have here in the community and meeting those residents, it was a great time. I think you did a wonderful job engaging, engaging with them, so thank you for that. Also, rec league softball has started, I'm very excited. I'm also really proud of our team because they adopted a new rule to help protect pitchers this year, and it was something I think the rec center and the rec team was really looking diligently at, and I appreciate them looking out for our, our players and our families that way, and then we had a great, you know, first night of this, of the season, last night for women's league, and so, I really appreciate that. And then finally, counsel, I just want to thank all of you for allowing me to participate electronically this time and, and trying it out, I definitely have learned some things I think we have, and we can get better from here or decide if it worked for you guys or if it didn't, I'm, I'm pretty excited to have that debriefing conversation, so thank you for allowing me to attempt this as I'm going to be in town today.
Thank you so much Counselor Daniel. Okay, any other comment? Okay, I'll, I'll have a comment. First, I would like to thank Jim and Brendan for the technology that you put in place, this is one small step for man and one giant leap for mankind, because it actually worked all the way through, and thank you for making sure that everything was tested prior to having this meeting. The other thing I would like to also thank Counselor Daniel and Holly for attending the festivities at the Evergreen Nursing Home and the SLV Care Center to celebrate the National Skilled Nursing Week. Also, once again, I can't thank the law enforcement officers and first responders for all of their help and support, and also showing appreciation during Police Memorial Week. And then, I would like to also thank all of the councils, council members here, because I know all of you are doing something throughout our community at any given day and time of the week, and I really appreciate when I get a chance to go out there and see you all in the activities that you're participating in, and that shows our community that you care by being present at those activities. And finally, this Sunday in Mona Vista at the rodeo, I will be riding a bull to bring awareness to children's youth programs in the, in the Mona Vista, San Luis Valley area. My goal is to ride that bull for eight seconds. The last time, the bull threw me off in about six-something seconds, but this time, I'm shooting for eight, so I encourage you all to come out there to the rodeo in Mona Vista, 2 o'clock. I will be the first person to ride a real bull that day, so I encourage you all to show up, because it'll start at 2 o'clock Sunday in Mona Vista. It's okay, you don't have to worry, we have a great mayor pro Tim right here with Lance Hensley, so if something happens to me, I feel confident that she could take care of the meetings after that. Yes, Heather?
Mayor, as you pointed out, and thanking IT for the setup, I did neglect to say, what you see over on the sidewall is IT's effort to make sure that should the sound system fail after the other changes they've already implemented, we've got a sound system that's ready to rock and roll, and can project it, it's, it's wireless and it can be recorded. So not only did they improve the belt system, and we should not experience any more difficulties, if we do, we have a more redundant system now.
Oh, thank you so much Heather, and thank you Brendan and Jim, really appreciate that. Okay, any other comments? Okay. If not, next we have executive sessions.
Mayor, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to CRS 4-6-402-4F, and executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402-4F, same thing.
Okay, I think Heather had a comment.
So, so thank you for the motion, I'll wait for a second for my comment.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, okay, discussion?
And given the technology setup we have tonight, what, we are going to do executive session a little bit different in that we might set up the tables here, so we can continue the video conferencing and, and the sound system and, and those types of considerations. So, we are going to an executive session, but we will need maybe a few minutes just to set up a few tables.
Okay, counsel, how about you all take a 10-minute break, it's well deserved, and then we'll come back.
After you vote.
After we vote, okay, that would make sense, let's see. We have a motion in a second, no further discussion, start voting please. Okay.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.